We got there at five in the morning. Wow. Then I figure out how to get my car from Salt Lake back home.
So you're going to have their whole family go?
Yeah, whole family, so. My brother's flying Southwest, so he gets two free checked bags, so we're gonna take as much as we can.
Is this the first time that they've done this?
Yeah.
This is the first one.
My boy said, "Why would we try to collaborate photos when we have a professional here?" That's what she does. We're living. We're foolish. So is there a way you can compile analyzing some photos for our next vision career?
Hi, I'm Catherine Nielsen.
What you feel would be good?
Yeah, you're welcome.
And you know? Yeah, I mean, it's super impressive to be able to do it. I think. So these guys will be looking for that meeting.
City Council is it?
They count. Can't be planning events, they're planning events. Cause it's not, it's not ours.
Gotta be a.
But it's not our property. And they are very strict. Cause they already have their own cutting. Can't interfere. So here's what I ask.
That is good to hear. How's it going, man? Doing good? How you doing?
Good.
Is that fire hose hooked up? You drinking in well?
Yeah.
Here's the thing that scares me, we talk about it a lot.
Recording in progress.
A B O R. Problem I have is, is then we're gonna build that overlook. I wanna know how many people in our coalition after that one day.
Come help yourself.
Wash their hands. I know who it's gonna be. And it's us. That's who's gonna be. So. They're better people. Got time? Oh, for sure. Yeah. I'm not sick, I just lost my voice.
Sure, sure. I shook your hand earlier.
Hey, I, uh, I presented the Clark today. He always serves my presentation in Texas.
Oh, good.
Okay, love it.
Need to get your voice back before then.
I got, I got two weeks.
Drink some water.
We gotta present us like two thousand people in Texas. Well, I don't want that. That doesn't look good. Let me tell you who's better. Skylar. He's a stud. So when I met him. He's only, he's only done. Three or four meetings.
Turn sound.
Did they send you some? Or no? Already have drilled. The drilling's done. So we know the stability. It's, uh, it's pretty grandiose to see.
No, it's really good. It's really, really good. But you're gonna be there in the state.
So keep getting some trip coming up.
Again, the boys who love my students from Monticlin and where, yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
He went away from the town hall. All my bad. Bad. I want you there.
Jared, how are ya?
Another day to you.
Been good.
What were you thinking? What were you thinking?
I get told a lot.
It was good.
Maybe.
Poisoned. A whiskey.
So I gotta, I gotta stay. Somebody thinks about half a dozen turns. And I go stop. We're right there together and he just smacked into me. He didn't, he didn't stop and I did. See what I got here? Pencil up here still. How you doing?
You're gonna be great, man.
Time we got run over by a. Probably. Two days in a row is too much. No, just, he warned me that he was turning. Well, that makes it good, but it's.
Should we get started?
Yeah, we're recording.
The mayor is traveling back. He had meetings, so he may be a little late. Asking to start another meeting. I'm on the chambers. Why don't we just go around and introduce ourselves? And then, um, we'll start on the agenda. Jen, you wanna start?
Sure, I'm Jen Blad, I'm the cultural arts director for the city of Rexburg.
I'm Alicia TJ and I'm the.
I'm Carter Stanford and I'm the newest member of the city council, Sugar.
I'm Catherine Nielsen and I'm on the city council for Sugar.
Colin Erickson, city council for Rexburg.
Eric Erickson. City council, Rexburg.
Chairman of the county commissioner. Doc Smith, county commissioner.
Edgar Sutter, Rexburg city council.
Chair of the Madison County Department of Works. Thank you.
Steve, you wanna?
Steve is all under, city of Rexburg.
Thank you. You've all got a copy of the agenda right in front of you, Jen, why don't we let you introduce?
Of course, thank you all for joining us. So part of the mission of Rexburg Cultural Arts is to create. To create community through shared experiences, uh, to be keepers of history, um, stewards of tradition. And as we're approaching a pretty significant milestone, uh, the anniversary year of the Teton Dam flood will be in two years. Because it wasn't a singular event for Rexburg, uh, we wanted to connect with the surrounding communities and say, what's the most appropriate, um, way that we can commemorate that event that's meaningful? And so we wanted to just really have a discussion today and, and brainstorm some ideas of what that might look like. In a few years as we work to commemorate that event. And then the second part that we wanted to transition into is, um, what the historical society looks like going forward.
So I'm going to, uh, turn the time over to Alicia, who's our museum curator at Museum of Rexburg, um, who is well versed in all of this history. Um, she can give us some update on what's happening out at the dam site. And then we just love to kind of have a, a discussion, um, about those upcoming events and what you would like to see and how we can outreach to other communities and surrounding counties, um, to, to see what that might look like.
Um, just so, brief history about the Teton Dam, just for anybody who might not know. Uh, the Teton Dam, uh, collapsed on June 5th, 1976 and spilled eighty billion gallons of water into the southeast Idaho. Um, it first impacted Wilford, Idaho, and then it went down and put Sugar City and then Rexburg, uh, Roberts, Idaho Falls, Firth and Blackfoot. It caused over two million dollars worth of damage and, uh, ten thousand, over ten thousand heads of livestock were killed and eleven people lost their lives. The communities all kind of combined together. They came together and they, they helped each other out, they cleaned up and they. They re, they, um, they came together to, to, to restart their. So, um, I'm just gonna stop. Thank you, I can, I can do that. I'll use my. Um, so that's, the fiftieth anniversary will be in two years and we just wanted to transfer the funding for that. Jared and I both on the Teton, oh, we're just a group of organizations, the city, uh, Bureau of Reformation, who built the dam and who launched, we owns the land up there. And we are hoping to, uh, revitalize the area up there. And so we're helping with the designs for that pass, we have, we've always done so many amazing, amazing, um, improvements. If you have not been out there in the last, if you go out there and you want to come to the town. Um, the cities, everyone will be helping with the, um, high end, the playoffs and also the, uh, the, uh, the, the people who. The victims, survivors, our, and all of us, we all have the, the. Our, my, well, my parents, um, Jared, he's always been, uh. He's been kind of pushing it forward, so we appreciate everything, Jared, about that. So with the fiftieth coming up, the bureau is, uh, hoping to have the overlook done and redone and new bathrooms put up there and some of the things, so. The things that we have talked about, thank you. One of the things that we have talked about, Jen and I have talked about, that we could do for, to commemorate this is to do bus tours out there, which is what they did, um, on the five year anniversary, is they offered bus tours. So that was just one idea. And so we'd like to come together as the county and Sugar City and Rexburg and just kind of brainstorm what we might think that event looks like, who is hosting that event? And who should be part of the conversation, if we should form a committee, this is just kind of a brainstorming thing. We know it's two years from now, but we also know that sometimes these things take time and budgets and things like that, so that's why we wanted to do it now.
One thing I'd like to touch on is having worked in with the B O R for the last seven years.
Yeah, having worked in with the B O R for the last seven years, they're very, very picky on what we do up there. There is a lot of red tape that you gotta go through, so you gotta be very careful on what you plan. And it, absolutely anything has to go through them, period. Or else we'll get shut down, so. Not really, so there's a new individual working there, his name is Skylar, he is absolutely phenomenal. Sorry, I lost my voice. The one thing I really wanna touch on and I want some input on the memorial, on the names, should we reach out to the families? To see if, if they're okay with that? You know, they may not want their families' names up there. Thoughts on that?
I think you should. I think it'd be good to reach out to families and just approach and say, we're doing this memorial for them, would you? It's more little for them. So I think you should. Respect for the families, we should.
I agree. So you guys are aware the B O R has committed a half a million dollars that they are gonna improve the outlook. And their design is incredible, so.
What's their target date for completion on that?
They're gonna start in the spring. We already core drilled in the fall, so we know the stability on the outlook. Um, I would invite any of you, on the twenty eighth, it will be held at the commissioner room on the twen- uh, ten AM. That would be next Wednesday, we are having a coalition meeting. And I think for transparency reasons, anything we decide here, it needs to go to them. And they're awesome to work with, it just, as long as you let them know about the ideas, so.
What time would that be?
Ten AM. Yeah, it's in the commissioner room.
So how, how much of that, of the site up there falls under B O R? I mean, do they have everything from, from rim to rim?
Oh, yeah.
And plus some?
Yeah, and Madison County signed an agreement with the B O R that we're, we're now the sole caretaker of that property.
We as in?
Madison County.
Do they go up the other side of the boat ramp on the Fremont County side?
No, that, that is Fremont, so it goes about halfway up the other side and the spillway itself is actually in Fremont. So if you go up there now, on the Madison County side, there's no graffiti. We went up and covered it all up over and over and over. Unfortunately, on the Fremont side, down the spillway, it's destroyed with graffiti.
So, so there is access from the north?
There is. We actually now have campsites in the bottom.
That are accessed from the north on the other side?
Oh, no, sorry, it'd be on the south side.
But is there access from?
No.
Isn't there?
No. They shut it down because of vandalism. Yeah, they gated it.
It's from the south?
Correct.
I think it's a good idea to get a committee together instead of put it all on council and commissioners. Uh, you know, I think we pull people from each of the communities, I don't know, fifty years is a while, but, uh, there's still a lot of people in the community that remember it, remember it well. I know when we did our hundred year celebration of our, of Madison County, which is almost ten years ago now, we had a committee of probably fifteen or twenty people. That helped with that and some of them were historical, you know, that, you know, part of the people that know history well. I can't remember if Lewis was on it or not, but they helped. But that, that worked out really well. Gave them a budget and turned it over to them.
We just include Sugar and Rexburg, or should we include other communities as well outside of that?
Well, Wilford is a area, it is Wilford, Wilford's an area. Which is actually most in Fremont County, right?
Yeah, I think, I don't think you wanna go south, but if you want to invite Fremont to join the committee, they certainly have some small, some areas were impacted. The city of Teton is primarily on the Teton side of, but I don't know the Teton.
I, Teton escaped it. Yeah, yeah, it did. Wilford, Wilford got hit the hardest.
So Fremont would be one group, I think going south down in Idaho Falls and some of those other later communities. Yeah, it's a different impact on them.
But would we want to include them in a conversation, say, we're, we're doing this event this particular weekend if they want to do something? I know we have traditionally the Teton Dam Marathon, it's up here, but maybe there's something that they wanna tag on?
I, I think my thought would be we let them know, but not necessarily in the planning. I, I think, I think if you try to include them in the plans, too big, is my thought.
I agree.
But that's just me.
Let the committee decide how to reach out.
The impact of communities for the last forty-five, forty-eight years have been, it's always been Sugar City, Rexburg and Madison County that correlated the various, you know, celebrations and your remembrances.
Uh, we, we recognize we've been kind of a keeper of the story with the, um, museum, but we also recognize we weren't the only ones impacted by it. And so we wanna overshadow other communities' experience with it when it wasn't a spectator thing, if you were here, you were involved, and so we wanna make sure everyone has an opportunity to engage.
It might be we only offer to those folks an invitation to come and commemorate the things that were happening to them where they weren't impacted as directly as, as those communities that were mentioned in, in the rural Madison County. So maybe an invitation, specific invitation to those, uh, those communities and their leadership to come and help commemorate it. They would probably appreciate not having to do anything, but just show up.
Um, and what, what are some ideas of what that could look like if we're inviting people to something? Is there a formal event, uh, series?
Things that are listed on the agenda are just, I mean, it's that we.
I can imagine a reenactment probably is out.
I think you could, you could find an old house and fill the basement with mud and let people play. Hold on to a few dead cows and pull them out for hidden locations.
Charge them three dollars for a shovel full of dirt out and feel the experience, I remember that.
You know, people still find flood mud in their walls every once in a while when they're redoing a basement.
I had some donated last week for somebody.
I think we do a ribbon cutting for a new dam on that date.
This is a, probably quite a, it, it's a large undertaking, but it has an emotional side to it. The LDS temple out here called the Teton River Temple, uh, one of the things that I just was privy to was how that was named and how that came about. And part of the reason that it was named that and was accepted as that was because Henry B. Irving was the president of Rick's College at the time. If we have a fireside on Sunday night, you never know, might invite him to come back and he might just have enough emotion left that he would come back and address, because he was, he was impacted by that for the rest of his life. He's, he's stated that several times, so just a thought, on that Sunday fireside, it certainly would draw a crowd.
I'm the Tabernacle Choir.
We could maybe get down?
Yeah.
Nope.
So I'm looking at the calendar, June 5th of the twenty twenty-sixth, a Friday. So, so we'll have, you know, weekend, Saturday when the dam broke, so.
And Saturday will be when the marathon will probably be?
On June 6th.
How, Jared, how much do we, how much do we need to include B O R if they wanna start the marathon there? Wouldn't that have to be a pretty heavy duty include, in the past, they haven't.
One thing I'll do on Wednesday is I'm actually gonna take it to them and explain to them that there is another committee forming. And we will stay transparent with them and between you and I, we can keep that, uh, they'll be for it. I know one big thing that they did discuss that they would like to see is a ribbon cutting there for the new lookout.
The marathon has started traditionally at their parking lot, their overlooked parking lot has been the staging area. They bus people up to it, so they'll, they'll park their cars down here and then they run school buses up for the full marathon runners. I don't know, John would know, but generally I think we get a couple of hundred, uh, that are foolish enough to run the entire marathon. It's, we've always had cooperation with the B O R for starting the event up there. The fire truck usually is up there spraying water, you know, way too early, you're composing the runner down. But, uh, I think we could continue that and, and start maybe with a little more of a fanfare, with a ribbon cutting.
The, one, one concern, I guess, would be that for any event that would take place up there, there's just so, so little parking, I mean, there's. It's not something you could, you could invite a couple hundred people.
No, so that's all changing. That's all completely changing, so if there's a turnaround now. They're now going to accommodate where the turnaround is now, a bus can't turn. So they're actually gonna widen that turnaround and in the center, there will now be a bathroom and two shelters on both sides. Where the actual old facility was itself, there's now gonna be a huge parking area up there as well with stairs to get to it. So parking will be much better.
I do have something though, did I hear that somebody was redoing the video that Idaho, or who was it, Utah Power and Light, back in the day, created that little video that you guys have at the Flood Museum? Is somebody gonna be redoing or creating something for that?
So we got a grant from, uh, Idaho Heritage Trust or someone, and, and they, they, uh, gave us the money to be able to do a new documentary. And we, we worked with Fred Woods from BYU TV and, uh, also, uh, Christian Mollum up on campus and they helped us redo that. It's called Flood of Memories, Remembering the Teton Dam Disaster. You can actually go on BYU TV and Google it and look it up and you can watch it there, so. So it, it doesn't quite, um, it's, it's amazing, we've had really good feedback, uh, it covers a lot of the Rexburg area. So we have not, we're probably not gonna be doing another one anytime soon, but. Looking at my boss to confirm.
So Alicia, I like this idea that committee needs four representative of the county and the two cities and maybe put them in charge of the event planning. Asking them to come back and report, share what they've come up with and we can kind of put a yea or nay to it.
So is that something that you would like us to do, is to form a committee or who is?
I wonder if each of us could suggest names and then task you with actually reaching, reaching out to the.
Okay, sure.
That satisfies everyone.
And how many of the committee do we want, I guess, let's?
Ten to fifteen?
That sounds great.
Jen, and you mentioned that you had some names for a historical committee, I don't know if those are the same people that would.
Um, so the names that we submitted were more for a historic building committee, but they may have some similar interests, so as we reach out to them for that committee, they may want to participate in this as well.
Okay.
Alicia, make the guys, the two from Sugar City, hold the microphone, weigh in on this.
What are your ideas?
I guess, I don't know, I don't really have much to say. This is, this is all new to me still and looking from a younger generation, I guess, um, just trying to find a way to bring that younger generation. And I think a lot of people my age don't really understand even what happened during the flood. So I think just trying to find a way to bring that younger generation in might be something we should look at.
One of the things that I think would be interesting would be to have an event at either the Tabernacle or the Romance Theater where you invite people that have actually experienced the flood or remembers their fond experiences. where you invite people that have actually experienced the flood or remembers their fond experiences. Because you can never get in a crowd, especially with a few older people, that they don't have stories about this. And, you know, like my sister-in-law, even though she's lived in Kentucky, she lived in Moody and stood on the Rexburg bench and watched her trailer go down the river. Experiences like that, you know, when you hear them from the person that, that lived them, it's really great, you know. I mean, it's a learning experience when you do that. I mean, I wasn't here when the flood happened, but I was in Kansas. And I remember to this day that the TV was on, the news was on, and they said the Teton Dam flooded. And I thought it was a joke. So, you know, and then when we tried to reach people here and we couldn't, I mean, those, the stories that people can tell about it are just, it reminds you that we aren't invincible in things. So, I mean, that's, and then the historical commission, I mean, both Rexburg Historical Commission and Sugar Commission would love to work together on helping to plan this. So anyway, that's my thoughts. Anybody want Mike?
We do have an event every year called Flood of Memories that's on June, that's on that first Saturday where we invite people to come and share those experiences. So we would love to have Sugar City residents coming out and to share that as well, but we don't, we're not doing that.
I know there have been, there have been some printed versions of accounts of, of the, of the, of the events of those days. Would it be, would it be beneficial to kind of produce something in, in print format, fiftieth anniversary? It's, it's a lot easier to get those kinds of experiences written down in a form that you can read them and experience them that way.
There is a book that has that in it. It's called The Good Day of June.
Yeah.
Those papers back then. I don't know.
The question, we, we were, we not again.
So Fred Woods, who helped us do the video, actually has reached out to me and has asked me to help collaborate on just a book, just as what you're talking about. That the city with, that I would do with the museum. So he would, I would help transcribe all of his interviews, or they've already been transcribed and we would compile them into an updated version of that day in June. So that is something that I'm planning on working with. So again, getting my, my two bosses' approval.
I will tell you, it, it's a much better story fifty years later than it was a year after it happened.
The fish are much larger.
Skills at embellishing over the fifty years that I could really make it an enjoyable time. Everybody wants to have a flood.
Is this something we can get the schools involved in? I mean, I teach the high school and we can get, as I think about this, we can get the high school students involved in an oral history project where they.
That would be amazing.
That would be.
And they can collect that data and thereby they're learning about it. The kids, you know, the elementary school kids could do something similar or maybe art projects or something. But I was thinking with the high school kids anyway, an oral history project would be pretty cool. If they were able to get names and people to interview, they could use something like that and collect this information. And they're learning about it and they'll be more likely to be involved in the activities over the summer. Plus they can help collect data and interviews and whatever else. I think it'd be cool. I, I mean, I'm the social studies department chair of high school and take a night with the guys and say, hey.
That is something that we would love to collaborate with and to do that, to encourage the, the youth as well as people to record those histories. Because sadly, those histories are going to start disappearing if we don't get them written down. So. And everybody thinks their story is not special. Everybody. I will have people who I would try and get to write down their stories. They'll come in and tell it to me, but the minute I ask them to record it or to write it down, I never hear back from them. So if, if we can have a collaborative effort on that, that'd be great.
Like having a high school student on the committee.
That'd be great too. That's a good idea.
I, I, we can't forget BYU Idaho because they were, they were very important part of that.
We've talked with Special Collections up there as well. We've been forming relationships with them and they have in their collection hundreds of interviews that were done. So we will also be, be reaching out to them. But I also like that idea of collaborating with them.
They've supplied a few names from the university that might serve on this committee as well. Definitely they were a major player in that event. They have the trans, the, the recording of, you mentioned the fireside that happened that Sunday night when Spencer Kimball came up and spoke. And they have the audio of that and it's really moving. So to be able to reuse some of their archives, I think would be great.
So would there be any value when councilmembers, you know, seriously, when were you born? We're here.
Two thousand and three.
Two thousand and three and a little bit after the flood. His generation may not. Is there, I don't know, and I'm just throwing this out. I don't know if each community also may have its own story in, in the different parks. The park at Sugar. Porter Smith, it might matter whether it's displays, a walking display to see something. There can still be something of a, a whole community and a whole county and everything, perhaps in a park in Rexburg. But still, each of these communities have their own sense of what happened. You can go there and talk to people and their experiences. And Sugar is different than Rexburg. Rexburg is different than Sugar. Wilford, they don't have any topsoil there as a result of that flood. I mean, just that kind of stuff. And I don't know if they would want to do some kind of walking, strolling exhibit through there and they look and they see, oh, that's where the post office is now. And then Commissioner Smith mentioned, we're going to go back and look in the county commission minutes, a week or two after that flood. If they don't, don't know when the two councils held their meeting after that. They were so busy mopping up and cleaning up, but surely there were further scenes. There may be historical gems that are in those, those minutes. So that would be something each of the organizations can do as well.
They just can see what they discussed the weeks following.
So with the committees, could we set a deadline of when to have your names turned in? What, what would be feasible?
Couple of weeks.
End of March?
Yeah.
That, that gives you two months. Okay, awesome. I will follow up. Do we want to go on to the, or?
Call in.
Another thing is we think about this before, it's going to take some, some money to do this. So we need to come up with the idea and what entities would kind of contribute to that budget as we come up with a plan to come back to us from the committee, say, because we're two years out. We're going to have to sit that year in advance of that. So we need to have that discussed. So we can just, you know, have which entities can contribute to that budget area.
That's good because the money manager's walked in the door.
One of the things that might be interesting to make Sugar City would be to do a walking tour where you went through the town and it was marked up what used to be there and what was going on in the flood. So if you like, you just walk along.
I'll buy better photos somewhere.
Mayor, I'll turn the gavel back to you. Mayor, welcome. We just finished talking about the fiftieth anniversary celebration or recognition. And the idea is this organizing committee that represents each of the cities and the county to get them planning the events and other activities that will be brought back to us for approval, along with a budget that will be needed for those activities. And I think we're ready to go to Historical Society.
Well, that, we do need to be ratified by the city councils.
I think it would be each city, each city puts forward four names and the county puts forward four names and that'll be your committee with it. So you're the first name on the city of Rexburg.
So we have to be appointed or approved just to be counted?
I think it would be just a ratification.
Okay.
And then Mayor Adams, we'd ask that they submit them by the end of March. Just pick four people that think would be meaningful and helpful in helping steer the committee towards remember its day on the first, the June 5th of twenty-sixth.
Steven, would you recommend that the university also, they've supplied some names to us. Would those be absorbed in?
Share those.
Where should those be?
You know, the cities could put them in, the counties could put them in. I don't know what the names are. If the university, for instance, you know, Mayor Adams works for the university, maybe his name's on that list.
If you want to share those names with us, we could consider, we do our point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have one with you.
You know, do we, do we need, as Councilmember Erickson pointed out, we need to include BYU Idaho as a fourth member of that community and let them put two or three names in. They might be able to reach out to that work that, that's still being, I don't know whether they.
I suspect they have a bigger budget than they're estimated. Uh, no, I, I, there'd be no harm in that. We have often throughout the years included BYU Idaho as an entity. They meet with us on our, our, our P O. They submit a representative. We're, they're careful not to allow themselves to be pulled into any contaminated church state issues.
They might have, they might have some archives or they might have something somewhere. Access to if they were very.
I think that's a really good idea, partly because they were heavily involved in this event. It would be totally appropriate to have that. I have no objection to that.
You know, Robert's brought up a great thing. If we hit up the president up there and talk to him and maybe see if he wants to put the entity in their names, he would have a lot better pull with Salt Lake and connection there as we look at the question's worth.
So you want to limit it to three from each city and three from the university then? So you get twelve still? Or do you want to run it up to sixteen members?
You know, with the, with the amount of attendance, sixteen's not too many.
Okay, so four from each entity by the end of March and submit them to Alicia Deacon.
You can, uh, you know, to a.
There's Rexburg, Sugar City, Madison County, and University.
And I'll send out my email to, I'll have.
Four times four. Is there, is Teton in Fremont County?
We discussed that they are mostly, but they actually didn't get flooded. They were impacted, but the county can pick them up if they feel like there's a member of this Teton. I know at least one of the fatalities was living in Teton.
If you run out of positions, give me a calling, I think bar one more.
Well, one of the things you had on here was, the reason I mentioned those, unless you know other communities damaged by floods, I mean, is that something you already talked about?
Yeah. Make them aware, invite them to contribute, but don't make them part of the committee.
Especially if Fremont County will certainly impact them.
Yeah.
Wilford areas, most of them.
Yeah.
So we want to reach out to Fremont, see if they want to be on part of that or not? Or just kind of invite them like you said?
The committee should reach out and see what they have to contribute. They might have part of that.
Well, then we're on to item C, which would be the reorganization of Historical Society. Apparently we'd get a long, long, long time Historical Society person, Lewis Clemens is retiring. Are we going to allow that? I guess.
Sorry, I say, I need permission for that.
So Louis reached out to me in December when the museum was closing and told me that he would like to retire before he retired, is how he put it. And so he wanted, he asked if that was something the city could help do is appoint somebody and we, that's not something the city can do. So that's why we're bringing that to this meeting is to figure out what we would like, what, what that looks like now. I talked with Louis. He is okay with appointing somebody, but he is also okay with Madison County doing that as well. So however that looks. So that's what this, this agenda item is, is mostly to figure out what we'd like to do at the Historical Society. I do have background and history on that if you'd like it.
Well, one of the things that I've wondered about, and this has kind of been wondering about this for a while. Typically, it seems like Historical Societies are. Yeah, I mean, I guess as our Historical Society, is it Louis and has he got a group that are part of that still?
So usually Historical Societies have a, a large committee or a board of directors. As far as I'm aware, it is just Louis. He is the director. He has been the director since forever, like thirty years. The, the Sons of the Utah Pioneer are kind of part of the Historical Society, but they're, they're in both groups and both camps kind of. So. But it is just Louis usually who's over there.
But that's kind of what I wondered, but.
What is the name? Is this Rexburg sort of the side of Mass?
That's a great question because it started out as the Upper Snake River Valley Historical Society. And then in two thousand and fifteen, they changed their name to the Rexburg slash Madison County Historical Society. So that's why it, it's confusing.
Part of my question, I mean, part of my thought there is kind of a bigger, larger discussion because I know, because I think our Historical Society is typically supposed to be under the auspices of the county.
Counties in Idaho, don't shake your head, Brent, because counties in Idaho are statutorily mandated to maintain the history of their counties.
We need proof of that.
I have a copy of the statute if you want it.
And it also authorizes the county to collect attacks, which Madison County did off and on over the years. I don't believe they have been recently. And some of that came about when Louis, the Historical Society, when we, when we obtained the Tabernacle and finally got it up and functional, the Historical Society requested space in that, what was it, a historical building. And so they were given two rooms by the city of Rexburg in the Tabernacle, in the basement of the Tabernacle. And, and then they facilitated for a long time, the museum was kind of run as an arm of the Upper Valley Historical Society. It, it became a little convoluted ownership of things that people were willing to donate to one entity, but not the other. And we got into a situation where we didn't like having some people who would say, well, we'll give it to Rexburg, but we won't give it to the Historical Society. And I think that's when they decided to do away with the Upper Valley designation and pull themselves into Madison County and the city of Rexburg. I really think the only reason the city of Rexburg got naming rights on that was because we provided them a space. It has always been a county-wide, some of the earliest books that Louis conspired, oh, that's the wrong word.
Compiled. Compiled.
You know, we're dealing more with the, the state grid, the Salem area and the Beaver, the Henry's Forge and the Snake and.
Well, that's, that's one of the other things that I've wondered about is, you know, I, I've just heard that, that it seems like there's a group out in Sugar that are getting pretty involved and activated as far as. So I thought, well, does it make sense for them? I mean, I don't know if they want it to be sugar specific or does it make sense for us to have a, a county Historical Society and some of those folks and maybe get some other folks involved that could do some kind of a county museum that adds a Sugar section and a Rexburg section and the rest of the county area. I mean, I don't know. I'm just kind of throwing out ideas.
We wouldn't oppose that as an idea to get everybody together and talk. They're a real active group with a good membership. They've been raising money. We've got property identified for a museum in Sugar and they're acting.
And we could actually, we've got a lot of things in our museum that could use a place to go. So I hope, I just kind of thought maybe, maybe it'd be a good day to work together and just do a county-wide type of a thing. And then maybe we all contribute to it a little bit. And they, I know a lot of Historical Societies, I stopped in Hagerman, you know, tiny little place. And they've got a little museum right there on their main street. And I was asking the lady about it. She said they pretty much run it with donations of, you know, people that are interested in history. And I think she did say, I'm trying to remember now, I think she said, I can't remember. She said the city and the county or, or one or the other helped them kind of get it established, but once they got it going, they pretty much run it with just donations and stuff. But, and I think that's how most Historical Societies run, from what I've kind of understood. So I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm not. So, I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to, you know, maybe all, all three of those entities kicking in a little bit, they help keep the lights on and all that kind of thing, whatever, but just throwing out ideas, you know, as far as what we could do to make some of that work's a little bit better, because, like I said, it seems like Louis has kind of been, there was a society, and then it kind of moved them to a society of one.
He says he's had a hard time getting memberships, that people just aren't as interested as they used to be in that, so.
Well, apparently, there's some sugar folks who are interested, and so maybe, maybe they know, it seems like people who have interests tend to flock together a little bit.
Are we sure they could recruit some Rexburgians and-
Yeah, I was gonna say, I bet you, because I know Grant is one of them, right, Grant Nelson?
Johnson.
Grant Johnson.
And I'm sure he knows other people, you know, in the area that might be interested.
It'd kind of depend on if the county wants us to have that conversation, because it would end up probably being more of a county thing than we support. And then we have to ask that group, because they are, they are, they're going just crazy speed towards a sugar museum. We have a, there was a detainment camp, I don't know if I need this, I don't think I need, there was a detainment.
Well, you might at least put it right out of your control, I think this has to be in the minutes, so.
Oh, official meeting. And, and, you know, there really should be some history compiled in that area, that, basically a prison camp and a, a corporate town run by a church, which is just really rare stuff that you just don't see, and, but Madison County as a whole has crazy history to get recorded.
With Madison, Madison High School, we had to purchase a home that belonged to a Japanese family, and that family had started out in a detainment camp here in Madison County, and then they had, after that had ended, they, they went there, and it was on the list of Historical Society, and that family was very hesitant to let the school district have that, and so, yeah, there's history, all running home.
I like the site, is there a legislative path that's supposed to follow, yeah, that choice?
Now, there's just a, every county is supposed to maintain the, the history of the goings-on in their county, and that's why it generally becomes a county-driven enterprise. But the Historical Societies, Louis used to have a great deal of support, the Daughters of the Utah Pioneers were a very strong group in Madison County, and the Sons of, for for, not for tradition. The Sons of Utah Pioneers, but I'm a member, so I have, I have something, I'm, both, probably eventually I'll make it into clubs, but I think it's just been a, the vice became busy, and Louis lost, you know, when Crowdlers moved away, Louis lost one of these strong supporters, and there's just been a, an ebb, and we, we need to see if there's a flow. Sounds like Sugar City's in the flow mode, and we need to find out if there's other people out there. I mean, the 20-year-old seems to have an interest in history, mostly because he hasn't lived any yet. But it sounds to me like, maybe, maybe you put together this committee of the people for the commemoration of the flood, and from that committee, you give them one of their charges is standing up a permanent Historical Society that may not be the same members, but they may have the, the knowledge, they may come into the knowledge of understanding, you know, the people that want to be part of sustaining history in this community.
I, I think, I think it certainly makes a lot of sense to, instead of having, you know, Sugar City and Teton and Rexburg, and all trying to maintain some sort of a Historical Society on their own, certainly makes a lot of sense to combine those efforts in a, into a county-wide Historical Society, at least that sounds financially, and, and, and to get the mass necessary to keep it going.
That's kind of been my thought, it seems kind of silly to try, I mean, we're a pretty small county, you know, area-wise, and, and it seems like to have one group that kind of covers the whole county. And I, and I don't know if, if Grant and his group, if they want what they're doing to be sugar-specific, and they wouldn't inch that in anything further, but I think it's worth having a conversation with them.
We can ask them, and if, and if not, there's probably members of that group that would, that would be willing to serve on the, they could focus on the county and sugar. But, I don't know, I'd have to ask them, but let me open the conversation. It all runs together regardless, right?
It would.
Your, your history runs together, but-
Our histories are definitely intertwined, I mean-
Don't separate them.
You can't separate the Mass, like Rexburg and Sugar's histories, because we, we've needed each other, and we've grown with, grown together, and, and the people who had businesses in Rexburg lived in Sugar, and the people who, I mean, and people who worked here, and, I mean, it's just, yeah, it's all together. That's why our history, the histories that, that the museum maintains have a lot of, of Sugar history in it, because that's who, that's where they lived, was out there, but they had businesses here. So it would make more, it would make sense to us as well, with our collection.
The advantage that comes from a county-wide type of an approach is, there's a lot of things about Madison County that we really are losing, you know. Todd may, well, maybe, maybe some of the older people would know how to get to Sunnyvale if you told them to, but most people in Rexburg, if you asked them, told them, oh, yeah, meet me in Sunnyvale, they'd look and shoot like, there's a Sunnyvale in Madison County? Or maybe even harder, and send them, what's the one out, like a Dolby, or?
Dolby, send them to Herbert.
Yeah, Herbert, places that were thriving communities when, when Rexburg and Sugar City were getting started, we were just better at it. Sugar City and Rexburg, we knew how to hang on a little better than the rest of them. I think the plain-on talent side was actually bigger than Rexburg initially, it just didn't, they didn't have as much of a off.
You've all been to Dolby, whether you know it or not.
Yes.
Or Big Justice.
Yeah, Big Justice.
You know, there may, it may save some emotions down the road as well, there can be Historical Societies in communities and in areas that have that pioneer stock or whatever might be wanted. But if there were a central Madison County Historical Society, that includes everything. That, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter what town, and if there are things that are donated there, there may be separate Historical Societies, but it could avoid, probably give it to them, or not going to give it to them. If that's a depository, and then a Historical person can't come and see what's there, whatever, it's got long range.
And you could, you could stand it up with a set of bylaws that essentially mandated requisite members being participants, so that Sugar City had a, a voice on the committee, and Rexburg had a voice, where they could deliberate, you know, who's the, who's the celestial group, and who's the, you know, going to the Sons of Perdition. We all, that's not a debate, we all know who's getting taken up first.
So this is something, though, that we probably need to move on quickly, because Louis is eighty, is 85, and has told me that he's, he's not doing well, is what he's told me. So we, we need to move on it before he, before his, all of his information and all of his knowledge is gone, and then I'm just trying to make odds and ends of his office, which, I don't know if any of you have been in his office. It, yeah, it would be nice to have him there.
So what do you want us to take from this meeting? What, what is our responsibility as commissioners?
Seems to me like you're going to stand up this committee for the museum, for the flood, maybe you just add to their early meetings, a discussion and decision on promulgating the Historical Society going forward.
Would it be better to have the Historical Preservation Group from Rexburg and the Historical Preservation Group from Sugar City get together instead?
However you think gets you there the quickest, I, I think the concern of losing the institutional knowledge, that can be accomplished by simply giving you the assignment allocation to meet with Louis and take the handoff, and, and invite the people, you know, invite Grant to come over, because Louis's institutional knowledge goes county-wide.
Right.
And just get to a time when you could all sit down and tell him that Sugar City and Rexburg and Madison County all want to see him hand off his knowledge and wisdom, and they, they ask this committee to facilitate that in some way.
Is there a commissioner that would be willing to kind of head up the effort, and I don't know if the two of us can meet with the commissioner, invite our Discursive Society people, and just talk about the county-wide Historical Society, how it might work, because it really would end up being a county deal, and we could enroll them one year. When I say a little, we are, I do that, too.
We, yeah.
See, he's not here.
The new guy gets a lot of stuff. We have a commission meeting on Monday, he's not here, so if we could stall you off there Monday, if nothing happens to Louis before 10, just to give a discussion, wherever we want to go.
I think he has one more golf season in him.
Oh, yeah. Probably caught his pass, or-
That's good. Okay, well, that's some good, yeah, let's, let's go with that plan, and I think that's, I think it'll be good to try to reinvigorate that Historical Society and issues that's going on that, and I, it just seems to me like it's a, a county-wide thing, makes sense, so. Is there anything else that you need to talk about, as far as, is that part of the agenda? Do you want to have anything? If not, then we will stand adjourned here, thanks everybody for coming.
For the, yeah.
Yeah. We will move on, and we'll have another meeting in a while.
I have to remake my calendar. Place one, and then-
And just go back to, you know.
So they should, oh, no, so my schedule is Saturday, so I'm on time.